It's good to see everybody here this evening. Thanks for, it's a whole herd of crowd here. Thanks for being here. Y'all were quiet earlier and now y'all want to talk, so we're, we're good to go. We'll jump into this. We've got a lot of stuff to cover, a lot of celebrations. Thank you for being here. We're excited to have all of you joining us and looking forward to doing some, some celebrations here. We've got the Marble Falls Independent School District Board of Trustees for, Board Meeting for Monday, April 28th. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. We have all members present. Thanks for being here, Board. We will kick this off with an invocation by Mr. Bergman. Will you lead us in the invocation, followed by the pledges by Mr. Boshiers and the vision statement by Ms. McCary. Please stand and join us. Very good. Thank you. We'll jump right into this. We've got some special recognitions. Item 6A Superintendent Award, Mr. Henson. I like those bags. Go come.
There's a story behind those. If I could have Emma Casey and Isaiah Lozos if y'all would come up. Two hundred and thirty-seven seniors that we had to choose from and when you put it to the staff and the students, well, not the students, we just did staff with this one. These two rose above all of them as our superintendent's award and so two of the finest seniors that we have and I'm happy to present them tonight. I want to share a few thoughts for both of you that came from teachers and students. We'll start with Emma. Emma's an incredible writer who works very hard in everything she does. She constantly pushes herself to deliver her best. Her determination comes through in just about everything she does. She is more than deserving of this recognition and will do great things in life after high school, that's Mr. Crane. Ms. Silva says, Emma is easily one of the most exceptional students I've encountered in my eight years of teaching. She's resilient in her pursuit of science and her level of intellectual curiosity is truly commendable. Her work ethic is unmatched. If she finished an assignment early, she continued learning through other work, reading or initiating conversations with me about topics from class. I can always count on her to go above and beyond. She's a natural leader and has a heart for serving others. She never hesitates to step up to a challenge to serve the greater good and I'm excited to see how she represents our town in the next steps of her life. Christie Brewer, Emma was a standout student in fourth grade and one of the favorite memories was during social studies academic showcase. She along with classmates Lincoln and Colton created an impressive model of LaSalle's expedition ship. Emma poured so much heart into the project, her eye for detail and commitment to authenticity were evident in every element, right down to the smallest details. It was a perfect example of her creativity, work ethic and passion for learning. Well deserved, Emma. Again, that's from Christie Brewer. Emma impresses everyone not only as an exceptional student but also as a grounded, humbled and kind individual. Her academic accomplishments are impressive and they are rooted in her relentless perseverance. I'm proud of everything that she has already achieved and believe she will do even greater things based on the foundation she has prepared for herself. Congratulations from Ms. Hammond. Mr. Woods, Emma's an exceptional student whose dedication and maturity surpasses what is expected of someone her age. She constantly or consistently puts forth her best effort tackling both classwork and unexpected challenges with determination and focus. I'm excited to see what she will accomplish professionally one day. Ms. Heath, Emma Casey is one of the hardest working students I know, yet somehow she makes it look effortless. She is intellectual and thoughtful. It's been a pleasure watching her academic career here at MFHS. Bliss Telmontes, Emma Casey is the most intelligent, hardworking and compassionate person I've had the pleasure of knowing. She's smart in every sense of the word, from academics to a wisdom that far surpasses her age. However, her work ethic and motivation are what truly separates her from her peers, making her an inspiring and uplifting person to be around every day. Emma is a true role model and I do not speak lightly when I say that she's going to do amazing things with such a remarkable mind and heart. Mr. Haley, Emma Casey was an outstanding student and leader while attending MFES. She served on the student council as a classroom representative, often participated and was successful in academic UIL events during her time in elementary school. She excelled academically, was a model student for kindness and empathy with her peers. I'm proud but not surprised to hear that she's continuing to work hard and have success at MFHS. Ms. Dipburner, I've had the privilege to have Emma in my math class for three years. She's a quiet, amazing young lady, probably not the same math class, mind you, just remember that. She's a very meticulous, hard worker. I'm extremely proud of everything you have accomplished. Thank you so much for the honor of escorting you for softball and I will treasure my softball. I can't wait to see what the future holds for you. Thank you for, thank you for making my class better. Couple more. Congratulations on your outstanding achievement. I remember working with you through the Horizons program while you were at Marble Falls Elementary. Your determination in mastering the algorithm for solving a Rubik's Cube while at MFE is truly impressive. I look forward to our class time as you readily shared your knowledge and experience with our class. Your ability to meet academic challenges with a positive outlook showcases your resilience and strength. Also your skills in critical and creative thinking sets you apart and demonstrate your exceptional potential. Keep up the wonderful work. I look forward to hearing about your future academic adventures and achievements. Ms. Diane Arrendondo. During my thirteen years of being filled with Emma or being friends with Emma, I have watched her grow into a thoughtful, kind and extremely intelligent person. She constantly puts others before herself and sees the best in people. She tries to make everyone feel included and will always try to make you laugh when you're feeling down. One trait of Emma's that strikes, sticks out from the rest is her unwavering empathy for others. Emma consistently cares about others' feelings, no matter the situation. If there is anyone most deserving of this award, it is Emma Casey. That's from Ainsley Briggs. Emma Casey is one of our most unique individuals you will ever meet. She analyzes things in such a smart way, I can never keep up with it. It's no surprise to me that she is our 2025 valedictorian, a position well earned. Not only is she very intelligent, but she's also really funny. I never have a dull conversation about anything when I'm around her. I hope everyone else sees this as well. Sophia Biagini. And then last but not least, Emma Casey has proven to be one of the most dedicated individuals in any activity she's a member of. She's very committed to her studies and has been a member of the Lady Mustang Softball Program. Although she has a very quiet demeanor, she's very supportive of everyone she works with. Coach Lazoria. Next up is Isaiah Lozos. I got to coach Zay for three years and have him in class for a year. His work ethic is top notch. His leadership is evident each day. He is so respected by every section of our student body. He is kind to everyone and goes out of his way to check on those he cares about. Proud is not a strong enough word. This is a young man who has an incredible character. The fun thing to say is that he is just getting started and I can't wait to see where life takes him. Travis Crane. Ms. Jones says, Isaiah is an incredibly bright and resilient person. I've had the chance to get to know him over the past two years and not only has he made an impact on our BPA club, but he's also demonstrated great leadership skills throughout everything he has done. He's also very funny and always has a smile on his face. He's one of those people that just makes you feel good when you're around them. I know he will do well in whatever he sets his mind to in the future. I taught Isaiah Lozos in pre-K. Even when he was four years old, he was a wonderful, kind and respectful young man. When I see him now, whether it is at our school or different school function, he's still very polite and carries himself with dignity. I'm so proud of you, Isaiah, and I know you're destined for wonderful things, is Ms. Lehman from Marble Falls Elementary School. Ms. Silva says, when I think of Isaiah, I think of charisma. Isaiah is a student that loves learning and making meaningful connections with people. His passion is business and media and when people, and when possible, he always found a way to integrate creative, high-tech videos into our science presentations. He's a natural leader in the classroom and also on the school campus. Regardless of what is going on in Isaiah's life, he brings a magnetic personality and a positive mindset to every day and task. He constantly seeks feedback, showing he has a growth mindset, which is an impressive strength that will continue to serve him well in college and beyond. Mr. Woods says, watching Isaiah grow into the remarkable young man he is today has been truly rewarding. From coaching him in seventh grade soccer to teaching him in AP Government as a senior, he has consistently demonstrated grace, humility, respect and outstanding sportsmanship. Ms. Bohm says, Isaiah's hard work, perseverance and kindness do not go unnoticed. Marble Falls High School is honored to have you represent our school at such a high level. Keeps shining, you're going places. Ms. Heath says, Isaiah Lozos has the best smile. He is always willing to lend a hand to anyone, student or staff. He manages to combine his wonderful personality with a drive for academics. We should be proud that he called Marble Falls his own. Dr. Smith said, Isaiah Lozos is an exemplary young man. His experiences adversity with integrity and fortitude, academically he is among our highest achievers. His character is impeccable. I am so grateful to have interacted with him as a matriculated at MFHS and grateful to be affiliated with this wonderful man as a co-alumnus. He is, he chose UT over an A&amp;M. What more can you ask for? By the way, UT is a Texas, not Tennessee, so. It's okay, Isaiah. Isaiah is one of the most dedicated people I've ever met. He is locked in on his goals and it's very visible to an audience that he pulls, puts full effort into anything, whether that was on the court or in the classroom. He's also just truthful and caring friend, willing to help you out with anything. I never heard anything negative come out of his mouth while we were on the court. He always made sure we were energized and encouraged to get better. Isaiah was a big part of the team and I believe he will play a big role in a lot of people's lives. He has grown to be more than just one of my friends, but a brother. I'm truly proud of this man. He deserves this award along with all the rewards to come. That's Titus Willie. Isaiah was an outstanding student and leader while attending MFES. He was our student council president his senior year and was also chosen as our campus superintendent's recipient in fifth grade. He was a model student when it came to character, academics and behavior and I'm pleased but not surprised to see that he still prioritizes these things and is having success at Marble Falls High School. That's Mr. Haley. Two-time winner of the superintendent's award here. Isaiah is an incredible young man. He has put his best foot forward nearly every day of his life. He's always been focused forward with his eyes set on a higher goal. We have seen this play out many times in his life. For example, when he was in fifth grade, he told me he was running for president of student council. In my attempt to save him from possible disappointment, I told him maybe a lower office would be better because of such competition for president. He said, no way. I want to run for president. He did and he won. Fast forward to his senior year, he's once again president of the student council. Hard work and high goals, the culmination of his dedication to what he sets his sight on, paid off once again with his acceptance to UT Austin. My husband and I are so blessed to have helped raise this young man and it means, Nana and Pa? Is I saying that right? Okay. Isaiah, keep reaching for your dreams, Ms. Lozos. Couple more. I've had the privilege to have Isaiah in my math class for three years, again, not the same math class. He is a great young man and is full of school spirit. He's going to do great things. Thank you for allowing me to be your teacher, Ms. Dipburner. I'm incredibly proud for you receiving this prestigious award again. Your dedication and hard work truly shine through in everything you do. As you wisely said in your 2017 speech when running for president of the Marble Falls Elementary Student Council, I always work hard and put effort into everything I do. There's always a time to play and a time to work. I'm certain your words ring true even today. I notice your ability to lead by example while you served as the student council president and I served as the MFE student council sponsor. Your exemplary academic and leadership skills continue to inspire those around you. Congratulations, Isaiah, and I look forward to seeing all the amazing things you accomplish in the future. Ms. Diane Arrendondo, MFE Math Teacher. Give it up for these two wonderful representatives.
Do we have some family and supporters of Isaiah back there? Would y'all stand up if you're with us tonight? And then how about Emma's family and supporters? Well deserved. Congratulations y'all and you couldn't have picked a better college choice, so I'm proud about that. So good job. All right, I'm going extra mile award, Ms. Henson.
Good evening. Tonight, our gym recipient is Jessica Martin. Jessica, will you join me up here, please? Ms. Martin is a special education teacher at the high school. She started with us in 2019 as an aide and then she moved to teacher the following year. Congratulations.
I don't know where to begin with this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start off just real quick with a quick story. She didn't know about this. She didn't know about this. I sent an email to everybody but her in the sped department, math department, letting them know who was gonna win it and if they would give me some quotes. Found her later in the hallway and said, hey, I'm gonna send an email out in a little bit to everybody but Erica Music Griffin, because she's gonna win an award on Monday night. And if you would, just give me some responses. I purposely didn't send that email. Yeah, I purposely forgot to send that email. But in what she does, she then sent an email to the staff, to the special education staff, requesting comments for Ms. Music Griffin, and they knew who I was giving it to. And so they caught me in the hallways a couple of times today and said, you really got her really well. And so, but she, and then I was having a little panic moment because she wasn't here at about three minutes till six. And so I texted her and I said, hey, what's going on? You know, don't forget it's six o'clock. She says, I'm on my way. I was helping a kid with a flat tire. I told you anything. Talk about going the extra mile. All right, I'm gonna try to read these and not get emotional. Y'all just bear with me. Jessica is the kind of special education teacher every student deserves, but few are lucky enough to have. She shows up every day with patience, purpose, and heart, tuned in to what each student needs and ready to meet them there. It's not just a job for her, it's a full-on commitment to helping students feel seen, supported, and capable. She always brings calm to chaos, celebrates small wins like big wins, and never stops believing in her kids, even on the hard days. You can see it in how the students light up around her and how she finds ways to bring out the best in everyone. Simply put, she cares deeply and it shows in everything she does. That's from Ms. Rowland. Ms. Dyce says sped folks and others I imagine can always count on Jessica for guidance, support, encouragement, and that happy, positive attitude. Ms. Gresham Hartung says Ms. Martin has been going the extra mile since I met her working at HEB seventeen years ago. She took in one of my students with autism and job-coached him through the start at HEB. Seventeen years later, that student is still successfully employed full-time at HEB, which he came to teach with us at the high school. I was so excited to have her on our special services team. Jessica has a huge heart for students and helping them to reach their fullest potential. She's a breath of fresh air and an inspiration to me daily. William Jacobs, senior. Sorry if my handwriting is bad. They locked me in Hartung's closet and turned off the lights until I wrote this. I don't think that's true, but he wrote it, so I read it. Ms. Martin is one of the only teachers who made me understand math, even if sometimes it sounded like hieroglyphics, but she was very patient when it didn't make sense. She would always give us extra time when we needed it and actually made class somewhat survivable. If y'all know seniors, that's a kudos in math. From Dr. Smith, Ms. Martin is such a blessing to work with. She serves some of our most difficult students with impeccable fidelity and care of spirit. Ms. Martin, as you might imagine, is one of the earliest to the buildings and the last to leave, day after day, week after week, month after month, all year long, investing all of her energy in the care of her students and colleagues. Personally, I'm grateful for every interaction with Ms. Martin, as those interactions always make me better or simply affirm. While I have benefited from my share of wonderful teachers, I definitely would have been better off as a younger man should I have had the fortune of receiving instruction from Ms. Martin. God bless you and thank you for your service, ma'am. Sarah Davis. I have had the unique privilege of observing many of Ms. Martin's math classes, and I'm always, without exaggeration, in awe of her remarkable classroom management, her high yet fair expectations, and the genuine compassion she shows for each student. Ms. Martin wears many hats, resource teacher, inclusion teacher, and department chair, and she brings unwavering dedication and passion to each of these roles. Despite the challenges math can pose for many students, which often leads to frustration or even resentment towards the subject, Ms. Martin consistently defies that trend. Time and again, I hear students say their favorite teacher is Ms. Martin, a testament to the positive and lasting impact she has on their lives. It is truly a gift to work alongside such talented and inspiring educator. Ms. Martin is the embodiment of superior teaching. She leads with love and she inspires with every lesson. Logan McKesh. Crazy and energetic, but amazing teacher. Caleb Schreiber-Holland. It is easy to understand her lessons and it's fun to be in her class. I would like to be in her class every period because of how easy it is. She is the best teacher I got, other than the PBSC staff. Debbie Williams says she is sweet, kind, awesome, and incredible. Lindsay Mosick says I'm happy to have the opportunity to talk about Jessica. I'm glad to hear she will receive this much deserved award. I can't count the number of times I've reached out to her with a question, whether by email or phone, only to have her show up at my door within minutes, ready and eager to help. She's not only incredibly responsive, but also remarkably generous with her time and expertise. As she streamlines systems and improved processes, she consistently shares her work with others, helping the entire team become more efficient. Her willingness to give, often of work that I know has taken her hours, is a true gift to our campus. She freely offers her knowledge, her time, her support, always with a cheerful, uplifting attitude that makes you feel truly valued. She makes all of us better and I'm so grateful to work with her. Ms. Music Griffin, the supposed winner. Jessica exudes a dedication in her role with a level of commitment that does not go overlooked. She continually strives to learn and is open to growth so that she can be the best teacher and mentor she can be. Jessica is passionate and detail-oriented, often digging deeper so that everything can be done within her power to meet the needs of her students and her colleagues. Ms. Craven says Jessica is one of the hardest-working people I know. She is deeply dedicated to her students, always willing to lend a helping hand to her coworkers. Her bubbly, joyful personality lights up every room, and it's been an absolute pleasure to work alongside her. Jessica is truly an incredible person and well-deserving recipient of this award. Jessica has a passion for students and seeing them learn and grow, she often thinks outside the box to engage students in math. She's quick to acknowledge the small steps in students' understanding as well as the big ones. I've seen students that may not be actively engaged in another teacher's class work hard in Ms. Martin's class. As a campus team lead for special education, he spends hours analyzing data to ensure that students' IEP goals are met. She also plans monthly team meetings for case managers to ensure they are informed of current and upcoming guidelines and expectations. This year, she added monthly team meetings for inclusion teachers as a way to bridge gen ed with special ed. Some of the topics included resources, instructional strategies, how to best utilize the inclusion support in the classroom. Not everyone may know this about Jessica, but she's a firewalker and a trainer. I didn't know that. I would've got you some hot coals or something to give you tonight. She told me once that this, I don't want you to stop teaching. She told me once that this was something she'd started doing after a difficult transition in her life. Her goal was to show and teach others that you can overcome hard things. Jessica personifies resilience, compassion, and hard work. I'm blessed to know and work with her. Congratulations on receiving this award. You deserve it, from Ms. Minton. Last one. Ms. Martin demonstrates incredible tenacity every day while remaining positive and energetic for those around her. It is difficult to stay consistently motivated and have the energy to be kind, respectful, and supportive of others. Being a good teacher who creates meaningful lessons for students is challenging enough. Ms. Martin not only accomplishes that, but also serves as an outstanding mentor and leader to her colleagues, a balance few could achieve with such grace. No matter how much is on her plate, and I know it's often a lot, Jessica's never failed to provide me with the support and guidance I need, both professionally and personally. When you speak with her, she gives you her full attention and connects in a way that makes you feel understood while also offering meaningful solutions. I've come to her in situations where I've been both right and wrong, and she treats me with the same empathy, respect, and helpfulness every time. It has been a true privilege and blessing to learn from her. Jessica's been deserving this recognition in so many ways, and I'm thrilled to see her receive the credit she so deeply deserves. Ms. Brunz. Ladies and gentlemen, our gem award, Ms. Jessica Martin.
Martin, would you like to say anything? You don't have to, but if you want to.
The only reason why I'm here is because of my team, so, um, thank you.
Ms. Martin had her back turned, so if you were family and then supporters, will y'all stand up again and just give her one more round of applause there? Well deserved. Congratulations. Spotlight on Excellence, Dr. Gasway.
I actually have two. We're gonna recognize two tonight, and we had a unique dual nomination, so Randy Dalton, Josh Cole. Y'all will come up here and join me.
All right, so here we are. It is April, Spotlight on Excellence. I'm here with Sandy and Amanda, and we normally have one Spotlight on Excellence. We'll do a teacher, a paraprofessional, but we'll do somebody, but we're talking about two teachers that have made a huge impact in your grandson's life and your son's life. Tell me about who we're nominating and why we're nominating.
We are nominating Mr. Cole and Ms. Dalton from Cole to Elementary. Let me tell you a little bit about how they've changed my grandson, my family, and our community, basically, which is in the autism world. Mr. Cole and Ms. Dalton, from the beginning of, before fourth grade, the end of third grade, they started reaching out. My Marcus is a fourth grader this year, but for the last two or three years, he struggled, like really struggled. Towards the end of third grade, Mr. Cole and Ms. Dalton started asking questions while I was there as a volunteer. What is Marcus like? What does he not like? Just asking, what are his triggers? What can we do to help them? Beginning of the year, we found out that Mr. Cole was a teacher. Automatically, from I would say the second week, about the second week.
Yeah, the first week was different.
Uh-huh, but the second week, we saw a change. They continued throughout the whole year. From a kid that did not want to go to school, did not want to even carry his backpack.
Failing.
Failing, spending more time outside of the classroom because of his self-esteem and behavior issues, he just, he couldn't handle it. To now that, like, he did not want to miss. He doesn't, he hates missing school.
Awesome.
Mr. Cole and Ms. Dalton have set a solid foundation for fifth grade and years to come. My hope is that other teachers see them as role models, because this is beyond education. This is beyond what a sped team tells them. It comes from the heart. They have gone beyond what a normal teacher does.
I agree, yeah. And like I said, I just want to show my appreciation for the teachers, because I want them to keep that, you know, momentum, that drive, that, you know, that heart that they have that they put into my kid. I want them to, you know, I want them to be recognized.
I can see y'all's passion, for sure, and I appreciate it. I know in our conversation, I know you have prayed a lot over Dalton, and this was an answer to prayer, for sure. And so I just appreciate your call. I appreciate your willingness to nominate them. I appreciate you coming in and voting for them, and they are gonna be our Spotlight on Excellence for the month of April, Autism Awareness Month. And what a great month to have that, so, congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Dalton, here we are. It is April, Spotlight on Excellence, and you are one of our two Spotlight on Excellence teachers. Tell me what inspires you, what leads you to just do your job, you do it well. Talk to us about why you love and inspire our kids.
Um, because I love the kids. I love the community. These kids come in every day and make me wanna show up and have fun. And I, I learned just much from them as they learned from me, so, love them. They put in their efforts. They wanna be here, which makes me wanna be here and be a better teacher. And my team really is part of it, too. So it's really a strong team, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the volunteers like Sandy. And it's just a great place to work for, and I do it for them. They make me wanna show up, so.
Well, your work is not going unnoticed, so on behalf of the district, thank you for going above and beyond and letting us spotlight you as one of our excellence teachers this month, in the month of April, so congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. Well, here we are, Mr. Cole. It is April, and we're spotlighting excellence, and you are one of our two recognized teachers for Spotlight on Excellence. We got to already talk with Ms. Dalton, and I will tell you, you are recognized by Sammy Ruiz. Tell me a little bit about what drives you, what motivates you, what makes you the great teacher that you are. Tell us a little bit about your secret.
Getting to know all my students and working with them and finding out what makes them want to succeed and want to try their best, and captivating that energy with them, and trying to find different ways to get them to learn new things that interest them that they haven't learned before.
Well, one of the things that really stood out, just as you talk about getting to learn your kids, is that that process begins right now for your kids that you're gonna get next year. I heard stories about just the investment you make in your kids, and what an example, how meaningful that is. Kudos.
Thank you.
On you. Well, thanks. I am so excited to recognize you and Ms. Dalton as our two Spotlight on Excellence April nominees and winners, so congratulations.
Thank you.
All right?
Meanwhile, I'm here at the White House as President Trump is going to mark 100 days in.
Wow, that was not part of the video. So, for each of you, something to put on your desk, and then something to hang on your refrigerator at home to show your spouses and family. How proud of you, oh, sorry. I handed them my favorite, y'all's. Can I get a picture with y'all? Awesome.
Dalton and Mr. Case, anything to say? Feel free. If y'all have anything, words of wisdom to impart to us, anything else?
That video interview was a surprise, so, caught off guard, but I really appreciate the community support of our volunteers and everyone, and we really do do it for the kids. They're just, they're amazing, and that's all I can say, I guess, so, thank you for the award.
Any family, supporters, Mr. Dalton? Ms. Dalton, Mr. Case, stand up. Congratulations. Spotlight on Engagement, Ms.
Good evening. This evening's Spotlight Engagement goes to a very special teacher at Marble Falls Middle School. My heart is full and I smile every time and I go in his room, just like so many others. His students are highly engaged in mathematics and he's everywhere in the room, not only supporting them, but encouraging them and getting them to stretch their thinking. He's a master at creating strong relationships with his students. I would like Gip Keaton, math teacher at Marble Falls Middle School, to come up here while I say a few more words. Ms. Kristy Greathouse, instructional coach at the middle school, wanted us to know that having worked on a team with Gip, she knows firsthand that he goes over and above for his students. Seeing him interact with his students in his classroom is a masterclass in managing behavior and engaging students in learning. On top of all this, Gip brings his humor and kindness to the middle school campus. There's no greater honor for us as an educator than to hear from students, and we're so fortunate that Ms. Greathouse was able to get some of Mr. Keaton's eighth-grade students to put into words how great he is from their perspective. He cares about us and he acts real. Mr. Keaton's funny, he makes us laugh, even if it's like dad jokes. He makes sure that everybody understands, and he will explain it different ways if we need him to. He's really positive, and I don't even have him as my math teacher, but he helps me at ace. Math can be boring, so it helps that he makes us laugh and makes it fun. He has so much patience for us. He is nice and he respects us. The way he is, other teachers should be like that in their class, because we learn and we are working and we listen to him. He is a good teacher and patient with me, because my English is not as good. He helps me understand better by giving me notes with pictures. Could you hear their voices? Because I could, very touching. Mr. Keaton exemplifies doing what it takes to get the highest of engagement in his classes. He's a role model in Marble Falls ISD for staff and students. Congratulations to Gip Keaton, April Spotlight on Engagement. ISD for staff and students. Congratulations to Gip Keaton, April Spotlight on Engagement.
Mr. Keaton, anything you'd like to say?
Giga Maggies?
All right. Friends, supporters, families, Mr. Keaton, stand up and let us recognize you, too. All right. Let's see. BPA State Qualifier, Skills USA and TSA, Ms. Bernard.
Hello. I am actually going to ask the advisors of our CTE organizations who are being recognized tonight to come up. These are our state finalists who qualified through regionals or area and then advanced to compete at the state competition, and so we went to recognize them. First up is BPA, and that is Ms. Jones and Ms. Dupre.
Good evening. And as Ms. Martin's neighbor in the hallway at the high school, I can tell you that everything they said about her is absolutely true. And I had a weird school dream the other day, and she was the one that helped me in that dream, so. So hello, my name is Elizabeth Jones, and I am one of the business teachers at the high school. Myself, along with Ms. Dupre, the audiovisual teacher, are the two advisors for BPA. BPA stands for Business Professionals of America. It is our club that competes in all things business. This year, we had the pleasure of coaching some really talented and amazing students. First, our students have to compete in a regional competition, and in order to advance to state, they have to be in the top 2 of their category. We had 2 students that made it to state this year. Brazos White, competing in digital media production, and Jared Smith, competing in entrepreneurship. In addition, we had 3 teams that were alternates. Over, almost all of our teams that competed in regionals finished in the top half of their categories, which is an overall improvement from last year. Since we had alternates, we took a total of 7 students to compete at the highest level at our state competition in Dallas in March. While our alternates did not get to compete in the original category, unfortunately, they were able to compete in open events while at state. I would like to mention that the highest placements in the open events were Madison Hardaway, who placed 15th out of 150 competitors in digital communications, Katie Terrell, who placed 17th out of 127 competitors in parliamentary procedures, and Jared Smith, who also competed in an open event, in addition to his entrepreneurship, placed 11th out of 130 competitors in digital marketing. All of our students finished in the top half of their categories, which was difficult and extremely competitive. I think it's important to note that our kids are involved in sports, key club, NHS, student council, and even with all that extra work, they still performed professionally and gracefully. They are extremely well-rounded and mature kids, which is a very desirable job skill in the future. We are so proud of our students and how they represented not only themselves, but Marble Falls High School. And again, this year, we were, in fact, the best dressed. So, if that was an award, we would have taken the sweep. Thank you very much.
Before you go, will you take that microphone off there and just pass it down? And just, will you introduce yourself and maybe one of the most important things that you accomplished, something you're proud of, that sort of thing?
My name's Hannah Welch, and this was my 2nd year qualifying for state, and it was just a really fun opportunity. And, yeah, it was really fun.
Hi, I'm Casey Cotton. This is my 1st year in BPA, so this is my 1st time going to state.
I'm Katie Terrell. This is my 2nd year in BPA, and I just loved the bonding experience that we all had.
My name is Madison Hardaway, and I feel like I could really see an improvement in our presentation this year, and I think that next year is going to be even better than the last 2.
I'm Brazos White. This is my 1st year in BPA, and it was a really fun experience.
I'm Jared Smith, and this is my 1st year in BPA, and I had a lot of fun and felt like I learned a lot as I went through this process.
Very good. Thank y'all. Congratulations.
All right, next up, we are going to have Skills USA. So, Mr. Hartsock and Mr. Vee, if you will come on up here. And your kiddos, too. Skills USA, come on up. There's a lot of kids here.
If you guys know Mr. Vee over here, you know he can sell salt to a slug, so I'm gonna let him talk about all this.
I know. Thank you. Thank you very much. These are our competitors that went this year to Corpus Christi for Skills USA. Mario, come on. Get over here. Come over here. This is the most we've ever taken to Skills USA. We had approximately 15 make it. I think we ended up taking 11, because some people couldn't keep their grades up. So, but that's just the way it happens. We had the biggest entourage of welders go. One person's the 2nd time state winner, correct? Blonde, bronze last year. Okay. And the most welders we ever had, well, I can't stop, thank Hartsock and Rybeck, they did a great job with these young men. And a young lady also. So, we also had the most projects to go. Take blue ribbons at district, and then we end up going to Corpus Christi for skills, and we take blue ribbons there. They don't give out medals. We didn't meddle in anything this year. We had 2 people that did dual things. One was charcuterie board and tool identification. And the other young lady, she's not here right now, she did tool identification. They didn't place in the top 3. But also, we had one young lady, she did the table, right? So, we had 2 guitars built. What else would be there? Charcuterie board. Oh, Mr. Colton Mylum, he scored 390 out of 400. I've never seen that happen. That's way up there. So, I'm going to get the mic to them, let them give them a look what's going on. Tell them what your project is, what it was, and tell them your name, please.
I'm Mario, and I think Mario Cortez, and I was part of the welding team, fabrication.
I'm Mark, and I was part of the fabrication team also.
I'm Lucas Laut, and I made the charcuterie board.
I'm LT Gerganis, and I built a guitar.
I'm Roman Brown, and I was part of the fabrication team.
I'm Timothy Fogel, and I did a welding sculpture and a slideshow presentation that never happened.
I'm Colin Mylum. I did the fire pit.
Esther Baker, welding furniture.
Peyton Garcia, I built a guitar.
I'm Chris Meissen. I was part of our little AV production team. We never actually turned in our video project, and we still somehow made it to state. And I think we were, what, we were bronze? Yeah. And, yeah, just good experience all around.
It's funny how things happen like that. Okay, these young people, they span everything from freshmen all the way up to seniors. We're going to lose all of our seniors. We've got a bunch of kids coming up. They are super excited. When they see this many people go to a state competition and come home with an award, they want to go do it again. They want to go do it. So, Chris is a 4-time state qualifier. So, he's won every time, except for this year. So, thank you very much. These guys, turn around, wave it to everyone. Thank you very much.
I'm going to say one thing while they're talking. They have some amazing projects, and if you haven't seen it on Facebook, check them out. These kids are crazy talented. What was really interesting with our welding fabrication team is they show up to state, and they're given a project and blueprints, and they have to put it together. And they've got 7 hours? 7 hours? So, TIG welding and a 7-hour time limit to fabricate this project. There was only 1 team that made it in the time limit, and we were like 1 minute out. But that's really cool. They have to build it all in 1 shot. So, congratulations, guys. Good job. All right, high school TSA, Ms. Tedesco. High school TSAers, come on up here.
All right. My name's Lindsay Tedesco. I'm the engineering and robotics teacher at the high school. I also do TSA, which is Technology Students Association. We took 30 kids to state this year, which was the most the high school's ever taught, most the high school's ever taken. Super proud of these kids. They also, like, if you took how we did in previous years, they collectively scored higher than anyone else. And the robotics team did better than they ever had at state also. So, they did amazing. I'm going to, let's see.
I'm Jonathan Leflet, and I competed in 3 photography events. One was architectural buildings, animal pet, black and white, animal pet color.
I'm Brazos White, and I competed in the on-demand video.
I'm Landon Griffith, and this is my 3rd year qualifying for state in the forensics category.
I'm Evan Puga, and we did engineering design.
I'm Landon Fletcher, and we also did engineering.
I'm Noe Hall, and I did debate with Brooke Meacham.
I'm Brian Bernard, and I did technology problem solving.
I'm Abby Kinsel. I was on the VEX team, and with the team, I did webmaster, STEMass media, and, oh, it was like software design.
Hi, I'm Brooke Meacham. I did 5 events. I did debating technology issues, STEMass media, STEMass media, webmaster, video game design. Yeah.
I'm Kaylee Copus, and I competed in fashion design and technology and audio podcasting.
I'm Cassie Stens, and I competed in digital photography, where I took a picture of an architecture. And then I also competed in a sticker decal where I made a Miata.
I'm Connor Yoclin, and I competed in structural design and engineering.
Up there, take a picture.
All right, we've got middle school TSA. So, Ms. Jett, Mr. Will, I don't know if Mr. Bush is here or not. Okay. And TSA kiddos, come on up here, just like the high school kids. Come line on up.
Hi, I'm Michelle Jett, and this is Marble Falls Middle School TSA. And we went to regionals first, Heart of Texas Region, and competed in Waco for a day. And then, the students who qualified went to state, and we took 33 students for 4 days and 3 nights in Fort Worth, 6th through 8th grade. So, I think we are the only group that takes kids that young overnight. And they did amazing. No problems at all, taking them that far and that long. Very proud of them. We actually won several events that we qualified for nationals, and several events that stop at the state level that we won first place on. And a lot of our kids, like I said, there were 33 of them, are involved in sports, and they couldn't be here tonight because they're competing with their sports. But couldn't do it without Cory, Cory Williamson.
Cory Williamson.
Hello, I am Zellum Payson. I did Off the Grid with Magnolia, my sister, and Rita, and I got 6th at state.
Hi, I'm Eli Bradley. I did medical technology with Evan Casper and Noah Yuri. I also did promotional marketing and placed 7th.
Hi, I'm Noah Yuri. I competed in medical technology with Eli Bradley and Evan Casper, and I think either towards last place.
I'm Charlie Dean. I competed in website design, and I am not sure what place I got.
I'm Sima Padraza, and I competed in Off the Grid with my friend Max, who is not here, and I honestly don't know what we placed.
My name is Joshua Mason, and I did coding, and my partner Cooper's not here, but I'm not sure what place I got.
I just want to say that even if they didn't place, making it to state is an awesome, awesome thing.
Hi, my name is Kimberlin Bowie, and I competed in forensic technology for 8th place and leadership strategies with 4th place.
I'm Camia Cho Haley, and I was her partner for forensics, and we got 8th, and leadership strategies, we got 4th. And our 3rd partner, Cooper Haltem, is not here.
My name is, my name is Claire Folaro, and I competed in woodworking, and I got 1st place with Lilian Clark.
My name is Lucy Greathouse. I competed in chapter team and problem solving, and we got last place on both.
I'm Jake Welch, and I did a community service video and got 2nd.
So, up on the screen, you can see under the national qualifying events, those kids that got 1st and 2nd qualified for nationals. So, yay, congrats to them. I'm sorry, parents. And some events, top 4 go. So, you have a few more national qualifiers. So, congratulations. Oh, and the t-shirts won 1st place at the competition. T-shirt design. Awesome. Good job. And that is us.
All right. Very good. That gets us to item 6F is powerlifting state qualifier, Coach Timmerman.
What can I say? These young men know how to clear a room. Good evening. My name's Carl Beilfeld. I'm the head powerlifting coach at Marble Falls High School, AKA Coach Beef. That's my assistant, George Munius. And we had the privilege of taking 3 young men to state this year. Powerlifting has its own mystique, both the team and individual competition. A lifter finds themselves on a platform with 3 strangers, judging their performance, and whole other multitude waiting to see if they will successfully complete their lift. We had 3 young men consistently met that challenge and earned a spot at the 2025 Texas High School Powerlifting Association's state meet at the Taylor County Expo in Abilene, Texas. Along the way, they fought through missed lifts and the roller coaster of emotions that can either propel you or derail you. Along the way, they fought through missed lifts and the roller coaster of emotions that can either propel you or derail you in your endeavors. The boys earned third place at the regional meet in Gazeville, Texas as a whole. We had five medal. One of our state lifters, Nufo Salazar, established the new regional record for bench with a bench of three hundred and ninety pounds in the one hundred and eighty-one pound weight class. So if you saw any of my videos on Instagram, it was kind of things. But then we talk about the fact that everybody stops and watches that one lifter go after those big lifts. And so that's why I love powerlifting so much is as much as you're standing there by yourself, doesn't matter where you go to school or everybody's going to root for anybody picking up big weight. So representative here tonight is Daniel Dominguez, who finished sixth at state with a total of one thousand thirty-five pounds across all lifts. His brother David, obviously being responsible, had to work tonight and placed ninth with a total of eleven hundred, ah, I can't talk, eleven hundred and twenty-five pounds. And then Nufo finished first at regionals with a total of fourteen sixty-five. But from each year, we have, we're scaffolding, to use an educational term, as far as going from one year to next, as far as going from regionals to state and then we'll finish competition to state. But I will say this, even after missing a lift at state and that finished his afternoon there, or morning I should say, took about fifteen minutes and he was back supporting his teammates and doing whatever he could to help us go there. But when we finish and we look back at regional, state rankings right now, even having not finished state, he still is ranked number ten in the state of Texas. So when you look at the multitude of individuals that lift in this competition, it's a pleasure to come back and say that you have both the sixth place in the one-twenty threes, the ninth place in the one-thirty twos, and the tenth place in one who ends in the whole state of Texas across all regions and the thousands of young men that compete in this sport. So kudos, hats off to them for their accomplishments this year, Mr. Nufo Salazar and Mr. Daniel Dominguez.
Awesome, very good. Congratulations y'all. Alright, that's all the special recognition. So if you'd like to slip out now, it'd be a good time to do that, but feel free to stick around and join us as well for the rest of it. Ms. Schaefer, any citizen comments? Nope. Okay, very good. Information items, we've got general fund summary, expenditure report, quarterly investment report and special awareness dates. All those were in the packet. Any questions on any of those? Dr. Gasaway?
Well, as a matter of fact, the very first Friday in April is designated as Texas Fruit and Vegetable Day in public schools to promote awareness of the health benefits of fruit and vegetables and to encourage students to consume more fruit and vegetables during Texas Fruit and Vegetable Month. So there we go. And just as another side note of a special recognition day, Bill Orr turned seventy today.
Happy birthday, Bill. Add that one to the calendar. Special awareness date. Very good. Okay, anything else? Anybody bored, questions? Very good. That gets us to presentation discussion items, possible action. Nine A Fine Arts update, Dr. Mesker.
As you all know, we have an incredible fine arts program here in Marble Falls ISD. And I'm excited to be able to turn this over to five of our teachers that we're going to be talking about each of their programs. I had the unique honor this year to get to travel with the choir to Europe over spring break and got to hear those kids perform a lot and they were amazing. And so I'm going to start with Ms. Thomas in visual arts.
Big green one, sorry. Okay, great. I'm Kim Thomas and I teach our advanced drawing ceramics and AP courses. I'm really proud of our AP data. Love AP for giving us such great data. We had a small group of AP drawing submit last year, but a hundred percent received a five, which is the highest that you can get. And we are trending above, well above average in Texas with our data and above average in global when it breaks down per each category on the rubrics. We're also above global. That's been trending up in the last few years as we've just gotten the program even more tuned in. Our goal now is to try to be above the global average in all of those categories, which I think we can probably do within the next few years because we keep trending upward in that data. Our UIL Visual Arts Scholastic Event was also very successful this year. We continue to bring more artworks, more students every year. And like with our AP program, we are small but mighty. Statistically, it's a huge, it's the biggest art competition in the state, possibly like the surrounding three states as well. It's very competitive. We compete with all size schools. So even programs that have jewelry making, sculpture, like huge programs, we're competing with them and beating them, doing really well. This year we broke records and we had five students qualify for state. The last several years, the standing record was two, which statistically is really great for our relatively small team. This year we had three freshmen qualify from our Art One program, which is great because just five years ago, we didn't have an Art One team at all. So we've been like, Mr. Garcia's been doing really great with that program and the middle school's been really great feeding in kids that are ready to take on that challenge. And we just competed at state Saturday and they did really great and we'll talk more about those results probably at a different meeting, but they did awesome. Our National Arts Honors Society was started seven years ago and it continues to grow as well. They added a new project of focusing more on scholarship this year for their requirement. We did a collaborative project with the elementary schools where we asked all the elementary students to create a creature or a monster from their imagination. And then our NHS and ceramics students created those out of ceramics and we got to go talk to them about their creations at the semester and that was really cool. We collaborated and did some designs with local businesses and local charities and their works were like auctioned off to be able to give back to the community. We also just competed in our annual huge local community competition. This year we were given twenty spots to fill where they sponsored students to work with professional artists to learn in plein air paintings. These were almost all of our competitors and they did really great. We were one of the few schools in the area that actually have a program big enough with like students to fill those twenty spots. So I thought that was really great for us and our students did really well, winning best in show, first, second, and third and several honorable mentions. So we're like the top dog art, visual arts in the community in several different competitions. I'm proud of the kids starting to learn and help grow our art shows. We have one, a large one in December and then a smaller competition of awards kind of focused one. But they're learning how to math things, how to do marketing, how to like talk about their art in a community setting when people come to see it. It's been really great for them in the program. I'm trying to go fast, sorry. So in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two was my first year collecting data with the AP program and we had seven enrolled. And it's been trending upward. We had, we graduated a lot of seniors last year, so we went down a little bit, but now our numbers are doubling next year. So our AP program is growing. Interest in creating at a very high level is growing. We have eleven enrolled and nine testing this year and we have twenty-two currently signed up for next year. And expect that average of submitting to college board to be about the same, to be a very high percentage, which is great. I think that's my three minutes.
Just to say, I'm really enjoying my ginger man coffee cup.
Oh, awesome.
And it is dishwasher safe so far.
Yes, it should be and it should be safe up to like two thousand degrees.
Thank you guys so much for the opportunity to come and speak tonight. I'm going to look at a few notes so I don't forget anything, but I'll try to go as quick as I can. I've been up here and talked to you guys about band before and I always seem to start in July and feel like I kind of leave some things out that we do to get ready for July. So I want to tell you kind of how we get to summer band. That actually starts in January. We meet with our design team and our staff to go over basically how we're going to plan our fall show. And that includes meeting with vendors, talking about musical concepts, visual concepts, design aspects of our show with props, aesthetics like flags, the material we use for our uniforms, color guard costuming, everything. And so that takes place all the way through the spring semester. To date, we've probably had at least eleven meetings with our design team. And by the time we get to this portion of the year, May, we actually have pretty much our entire fall show planned. Right now, I can tell you the title of our show is Imagine a View. It is basically a concept of flying around in a hot air balloon and looking at things through a different perspective and a different lens and kind of changing your vantage point to see things. So we're really looking forward to it. At this point, we're also having deliverables. We've got rough drafts of our music, our drill, all kinds of stuff that are coming in. And so we're going to start working on that as soon as it's allowable to do so. So that gets us all the way to July where we start our summer band. And as you know, we're out on the asphalt, working with the kids. Many of our kids are also student athletes. So in addition to being out here jamming away with us, they're going back and forth to volleyball and football practice, tennis, you name it, cheerleading, dance. In the fall, we, I'll stop here for just a minute. We wear two hats. One of those being basically functioned as a cog in the school spirit machine. So going to football games, pep rallies, morning performances in the commons on Fridays, participating in community pep rallies, being there to do hall parades. Basically, we try to connect and engage with as many of our students and other student organizations and community members as we can in that respect. And we enjoy it. Friday Night Lights is one of the things that we look forward to the most in the fall season. The other part of our fall season is basically we function as a competitive marching band in Class 4A UIL competition. We end up going to several invitational competitions leading up to our UIL. And so this year, we were lucky enough, we finished second at the Fredericksburg Marching Festival in our classification, second in our classification at US Bands down in San Antonio. And all along the way, we're getting feedback and critical input from our judges and other clinicians that we have come in looking to UIL, which is in early October. We were very fortunate. We ended up making sweepstakes at UIL this year. That means all three of our judges gave us a superior rating on our field performance, which advanced us for the seventh time in a row to the area marching competition level. And so very proud to say we're kind of making that a part of our tradition for our kids is getting to that area level. One of the things that we had not done is area is kind of a double elimination day for us. We have preliminary competition in the morning and then finals in the evening. Those finals determine whether the band gets to advance to state. We had never made area finals and so we set out this year from the very beginning to have that be our goal. The kids met and exceeded every challenge we put in front of them leading up to that and we were fortunate enough out of thirty bands to advance into the finals competition in area. And on their evening performance, which was about fourteen hours later than our morning performance on that same day, the band performed again and we were lucky enough to get named as one of the bands that advanced to state marching. So kind of wrote some school history for the band this year in that regard. First time ever to make area finals and first time to be at state. The kids went to the Alamo Dome in early November and we gave it our A-class effort. Didn't make finals, but you know, being there at the state marching contest was an honor and truly I think a lifelong memory for our kids that they got to be part of that process. Had somebody asked me about what we thought this year looks like, I can tell you, I don't know if we're going to make it to state again. If you would have asked me in July if we were going to be at the state marching competition in November, I would have said no. And not because we don't have confidence in the kids, but it's just the planets and the stars kind of have to align for that kind of thing to happen. And we were just really fortunate. The kids bought into everything we asked them to do this year. And our motto throughout the year was that we were happy with everything that we were doing, but we were never going to be satisfied. And so every day we showed up, we tried to work just a little bit harder and make things a little bit better and that model really proved very successful for us. So ended up having a really good fall semester in that regard. As we get towards the end of the season, we kind of go into some individual competition for our region band. And there's a few more football season pictures here from football games, our middle school band night, et cetera, Alamo Dome. Our drum majors and color guard leaders got interviewed on the big screen at the Alamo Dome. That was a lot of fun. They were pretty nervous about that and they don't like talking. But when we get into the, that fall semester, at the end, we do region band, which is the start of our all-state process, just like choir. We go to region band auditions and we had a lot of fun with that. We had some kids that did really, really well this year. We had five students make the region jazz band, ten make the region band for our concert ensembles. And then for the first time ever, our region sponsored a percussion ensemble for the region level and we had four students advance to the performance area there. All of those kids got to go in January to perform in a concert setting with all of the other kids from the region that made the band. So lots of fun for them, a great learning experience. They got to be some really astounding teachers over the course of that two-day clinic that they got to participate in. So that was a lot of fun. As we get into the spring semester, we are probably our most vocal and visible thing that we do in the community is our concert ensembles for our UIL competition. That happens usually in mid-March, early April. We went this year. Both of our high school bands made a sweepstakes rating. Again, that means that all of our judges on the stage and in the site reading room gave us a superior rating. That is the first time in school history that our varsity and non-varsity band at the high school have ever gone and earned a sweepstakes rating at the same time in the same school year. So very happy about that, very proud of the kids, very proud of Mr. Cindy and his group for all the hard work that they put in. Our middle school varsity band earned a sweepstakes as well for the second year in a row and our non-varsity band at the middle school was just this close to getting it done. They made excellent rating on their stage performance, two-two-one and straight ones in the site reading room. If they had one more judge kind of lean that direction, we would have ended up having all four of those bands make sweepstakes, which would have been pretty amazing. In the midst of working on all of that stuff for the concert bands, we have our individual competitions and we have solo and ensemble. So our kids work really hard. Not all of our kids perform at solo and ensemble. They're, some of them just aren't interested in doing that. And some of them, to be quite frank, are too busy functioning in other roles, BPA, sports, cheer, dance, et cetera. And so we entered fifteen events at solo and ensemble. And out of the fifteen events, we had fifteen make first division ratings. So really proud of those kids. There were nine of those students that were recognized and will be going on to the state level in, on May twenty-fourth, that's the day after graduation. They'll be competing at Hendrickson High School to see if they can earn another gold medal at state. Those students are Maxime Soloviev, Kirsten Plumley, Christian Morales, Gage Keaton, Miguel Salazar, Ivan Martinez, Ervin Sanzmanez, James Lawrence and Madden Hernandez. So we'll keep you posted on the results that they bring forward in the May competition. Also, we had nine of our students that advanced here, but we had ten students make the region band. And out of those ten, earlier in the spring, we had four of those students advance to the area level. And that means that they basically got to go in. And that means that they basically got to go and audition for all-state. While they didn't make all-state, making it to that level of individual competition is a really big deal across the regions in the state. So we're really proud of those four students that advanced to area and the concert band. We always looking for new performance opportunities. So a few years ago, when we hired Mr. Tyree, he said, came into my office one day, he said, "Mr. Leflet, could we have a percussion ensemble concert?" And I said, "I think that would be super cool." I don't know that our community understands what that is, and it would be really great to expose the kids and the community that. So we've been doing the percussion ensemble concert now, this is third year in a row. And our percussion ensemble concert is actually tomorrow night. If you're free and you wanna drop by the high school auditorium, I promise it'll be a treat. I would love to have the rest of the staff here, but they're actually over helping to prepare for that concert tonight. So they're a little busy. But if you guys get to come out tomorrow night, it'd be really cool for you to get to see that. Here's some pictures of our kids that advanced. Our area qualifiers were Cody Harris, Jonathan Leflet, Morgan Montgomery, and Maxime Saloviev. Here's our flyer for the percussion ensemble concert tomorrow night. It's free, you don't even have to stay for the whole thing. If you wanna show up and just hear a little bit and then duck out quietly, you can do that. If you catch anything, I promise you're gonna enjoy it. It's all of our percussion district-wide from 6th grade to 12th grade. So lots of fun for there. We also took our jazz bands to the Fredericksburg Jazz Festival, middle school and high school this year. And we got to perform over there and see some really great bands perform as well at that festival. The clinicians that were there gave our kids some really great feedback. It was a good opportunity for them to learn and get to see other students performing jazz. By the way, we're super fortunate here, and I wanna thank you for us being able to have jazz in our daily curriculum. There's some schools, districts across the state that have cut that out, and it's a huge part of music education. And so very happy that we get to do that here in Marble Falls. We always trying to look forward to what comes next. And although numbers are not the most important thing, we always like to think that if we're growing a little bit, it's a pretty good sign of health in our organization. This is where we started the year, this is where we're headed. Not sure that the projections are gonna turn out this way, but if they do, we're definitely gonna be a little bit bigger at the middle school and high school next year. And that's super exciting for us as a staff, but also for our kids. They are excited to see our organization get stronger and stronger and grow. We were fortunate this year, since 2017, we haven't really taken a large-scale trip. I'm kinda jealous, Mr. Gage has been all over the world since I've been here. And I mean, I keep trying to say, "Let's go do something really cool." And so this year, we actually did. We went to Hawaii, and it was a tremendous trip, really great educational experience for the kids. And I know the adults and the kids that went on the trip were able to make some lifelong memories. We're looking forward to many more opportunities like this, maybe Europe someday, maybe Europe. But it was lots of fun to get to go to Hawaii. And we had a ton of our kids, really since we haven't traveled that much, a bunch of our kids had never even left the area here of Marble Falls. And so we had some first-time travelers really, and a lot of first-time flyers. And so it was a pretty neat experience to see them react to all the new things that they got to experience on the trip. We got to see a lot of cool stuff. Went and hiked in the mountains, in the interior of the island, and saw some beach stuff and all kinds of things. Our future goals, always trying to think about new projects, ways that we can strengthen our relationship with the community, continue to grow the band program. I'm hopeful, and I won't overstep here, but we are in a bond election. And so that next goal of renovating to accommodate growth, hopefully that takes care of itself in the next few days with the bond. But we're super excited about that. Our future goals, always thinking to expand our private lesson staff. Again, increase performance opportunities within the community, learning opportunities for our kids. We brought more clinicians in and had more group performances this year than we ever have. I think to date, we're at 70 group performances and over 250 individual performances for the year. So lots of cool opportunities. Continue to improve the facilities. Even though the bond is on the horizon, we're still projecting in the band hall currently. So if you come by and see tools and wood stacked up in the band hall, that's just 'cause we're trying to make it better while we remain in there. And trying to make it cool for the dance and cheer hopefully too. So and like I said, obviously, we're always trying to think about ways that we can grow the band. If we're growing, we feel like we're really having some help in our organization, so super excited about that. Our last goal is to install our new 18-wheeler that will be delivered, thanks to you guys and the community, coming up in July. So we have that new 18-wheeler on the road for us this fall. We have upcoming performances. I won't read that to you, but we've got a lot still to go for the end of the school year coming up for performances. Just finished up the Spring Starlet Show, it was a lot of fun. Concert tomorrow night for the percussion. And then definitely wanna thank our staff and our sponsors. All of this stuff that I mentioned tonight, none of this is about the staff or accomplishments for us. All of the recognition and the accomplishment is about the kids. We wouldn't be here at all if it wasn't for the tremendous musicians that we work with every day. And just like Ms. Jones said earlier, we have kids in BPA, kids in athletic events, too many to name. We have kids that hold full-time jobs and part-time jobs. We have kids that are involved in scouts, that are involved heavily in their community churches, that volunteer throughout the community with Key Club and other organizations. They're involved in NHS, student government. And in spite of all of that dedication and all that hard work, they still find time to dedicate their efforts and their music ability to us and the band. And we couldn't be more proud of them and more happy for them that we had a tremendous year. It really is a testament to all that they are. And just while we're at it, I've got other fine arts staff members here in the room with me. We are so fortunate here to have a great team. I can't tell you the number of times that I go to my colleagues and bounce ideas off of and just talk to them. Sometimes it's just to get a check in the day, like, "How you doing?" Or "I need a little pep me up," so I go sit and talk with Mr. Gage or Ms. Gilpin or somebody. And so we have a great team here in our fine arts and super fortunate for that. And super fortunate that you guys allow us to have so much freedom with our programs. So thank you, thank you very much, and thank you for all the support. Thank you guys for all the support. Hope I didn't take up too much time.
I think the common theme you're gonna hear tonight is that there's school history and school records to be made. I don't think anyone could argue that we have the best fine arts department in the state in Class 4A. You just can't argue with all the results that you see. So we've had a crazy year. As you know, we've been in front of you several times. We started out, actually at the beginning of the year, we won a state championship in performing America's Next Level Small School Contest. And that was like the first day of in-service that happened, where they named us the state champion. And we're actually doing that competition starting again this week. We are, it involves us submitting recordings and head-to-head competition again. And so we hope to take care of that and become a two-year state champion. Then also, we had the Foundation of Music Education, it is a national competition. And we were named a national commended winner in that, we were in the top 25%. Our school performances, you see all the things we do all year long, and it's crazy. And that's just first semester, y'all came to nearly everything. I've seen y'all at a lot of things, fall concert, all-state auditions, all that kinda stuff. The all-state auditions is a three-step process for us, much like the band. And we are going head-to-head. We actually hosted our own camp here for the second time, and we've already put it out. We have people coming for our third year, we host our own camp. One of the things that Mr. Leflet didn't tell you is because of all the new facilities that you have provided for us, is that we all host events. That percussion, region percussion concerts that they had, which was the first year, we hosted it here in Marble Falls. We host the region small school, high school, and middle school concert clinic during the fall, we host that. John Clark hosts UILs for other competitions in one act, other school levels. And then he also hosts his own clinic. So we use our facilities, we maximize those, and we thank y'all for doing all that. We had our camp in our all-state auditions, we had 31 make the region choir, you can read that, 24 pre-area, all that. We had six All-Staters this year, that's 13 All-Staters in two years. And our goal is to have 10 All-Staters next year, and I think I could name them off the top of my head right now. We also had two first alternates, that's scary, but both of those were young kids. They didn't like it, but you know, they're ready for next year in that. So All-Staters, it's a great thing. One of the smart things that John Clark did with me, among the many things that he did this year, because we had a crazy year and he knew it, we chose to do a smaller musical and we moved it at a different time during the year. We did Godspell Junior with our kids, and it was a fantastic opportunity to do a smaller show. And we still ended up with nominations at the High Awards. Evan Puga performed last week, was it last week? It's all blurry. It was last week in Austin at the High Awards, and we got to see him on stage. And I'm just gonna say, when they opened up and all those kids came out on stage, and there were a lot of them across the region, you could pick out Evan Puga like that, simply because of his energy and his presence on stage, it was amazing. So we didn't win any of those categories, but we're competing against 37 other schools, and we're the only small school that competes in that contest. This was big for us. We were chosen as the number-one school in 4A, number-one choir in 4A, and in 5A. And there were only two schools ahead of us in 6A that were chosen to perform at the TMEA convention this year. It basically dictated our whole year. Out of that, TMEA also invited us or chose us to perform at TASSA in January at the, that's the Texas Association of Superintendent.
School Administrators.
School Administrators. And so we performed there, we performed at the Capitol a couple of times. We gave multiple concerts in January and February, and that kept us very, very busy. Our performance in San Antonio in February, there were over 3,000 people in attendance. And it went, it went okay, I can say, it was fine, it was really, really great. And so that happened. Amongst all of that, we were in the middle of doing Madrigal Festival while we were doing TMEA. So we went and competed in Dallas at the North Texas Madrigal Festival. Our elite men received Superior, chamber singers got a POD, it's called a Performance of Distinction. Some of those are kinda hard to realize what they are, because you understand state championships, you understand winning. So a POD in chamber singers, they basically do it like this, it's a Michelin star. So we got a 1 with our men, but our chamber singers got a Michelin star. And so there are so few of those that are given out during that contest. But then our women turned around and got third place, which we were the only small school in there. Again, we're competing against 5As and 6As, so that is really amazing that they did as well as they did. Here we go. Obviously, you've already heard that we went to Europe. The Salzburg Cathedral was the only place that we were supposed to sing a full concert, that we had been guaranteed. The other places, we were supposed to do informals, and once we started singing, they asked us to give our full performance. And so we sang concert after concert after concert all over Europe. It is correct that we sang a ton. Up there on the left, you can see that was in Munich, no, that was in Vienna, that was St. Peter's in Vienna. The next one is the library in St. Florian's Abbey, that's just one of the walls. And so if you looked really close, you actually can see letters for the library, they mean nothing. There was actually letters even missing. They just put them up there 'cause they thought it would be, they should have letters, 'cause it was in the library. But it really had nothing to do with the organization of that. On the far right, that is the gazebo from the musical, The Sound of Music. There's actually a video out there of Heather Metzger dancing around it and singing, and I'm sure I can get ahold of it if you need it. Okay, you have the video, okay? The one on the bottom left, that is a boat we're fixing to get on in the salt mines. And that, what is to the left, is actually the water, and it's projecting the image of the ceiling, not below it. And so that was really cool, going into the salt mines. And then we had the performance at the cathedral in Salzburg. And then our first one at St. Peter's in Munich. And you can see in some of that, we are bundled up because it was cold the whole time. UIL happened, all three of our choirs got Superior ratings at UIL. It's the first time that every choir that we took got a sweepstakes. We have had 10 straight years of varsity sweepstakes at UIL, and in the last 10 years, we have received 32 sweepstakes total. And so that is a thing that we base our standards on. We're not finished, we have a concert on Wednesday, it's a recording concert as we get ready to do submissions. The TMEA thing, that was the contest that Dr. Gasaway had encouraged us to do, that we won. We are getting ready to compete in seven states now, because we've made that, we've made it past the first level, which was TMEA. And so it's called SWACTA, which is the Southwestern American Choral Directors Association. And those submissions are due at the end of the month, end of next month, sorry. And we'll be competing in that head-to-head with people again. It's also a non-class, so it's everybody against everybody. Our spring pop show, the 21st, stage and screen, we're singing things from Laverne and Shirley and all that kinda stuff. You'd recognize some of that music. Our middle school choir is doing great, 250 kids enrolled. They were part of the small school honor choir that we hosted here, they had 21 kids make those choirs. And then they had two students this year make the TCDA All-State Choir, which Zellum is one of those students. And so I think y'all know him. And so we're excited, we appreciate all you do for us, thank you.
Hello, I'm Kristy Gilpin, I'm the Starlet Director, I'm gonna go short and sweet, okay? All right, so this is this year's team. We always start in the summer, we go to camp. This year, we did something different where we hosted a camp here, and I will never do that again. We, they just don't come. So we're going away next year, we're going to St. Marcus, and we're going to a hotel camp in June this year. So we're starting earlier, we usually go in July. See, then we have football season, just some cute little pictures from them. This year, we only went to one competition because we did go to New York. So this competition, we got Best in Contemporary, and this is the first time we ever competed a modern piece, which is really different. And if you went to the show, you know, you're like, "That's a weird routine." But the girls did really well, we got sweepstakes, we got choreography awards, presentation awards, and entertainment judges awards. We got runner-up in hip-hop, which I don't think we should've gotten that. And then we got, all our soloists got Division 1. And then we got to go to New York. Here's some pictures of New York. We got to go to the stage where the Rockettes perform. I literally cried, I'm not kidding. They made fun of me, 'cause I walked on the stage and I cried. They were like, "Why are you crying?" And then we took a dinner cruise to see the Statue of Liberty, we went to the 9/11 museum, and then all, you know, the Brooklyn Bridge is right there. We got to take a picture with a Rockette, so that was really cool. And Ms. Mitten really liked that, she was our admin, and she's a dancer too, if you didn't know that. So she was really excited. And then last weekend, we finished our year, we had our annual spring show. And I'm really proud of that show, of course, probably 'cause my daughter's a senior and she choreographed probably about 90% of that show. So that's... And oh, we have something for you, hold on.
Howdy. My name is John Clark, and I'm the head director at Marble Falls High School. This is Jordan Jones, my partner, and I'm just gonna introduce him as he goes through these slides and then talks. No. Okay, I'm gonna burn through this, y'all. So our year kinda starts off with our summer theater camp. We have a week-long summer camp, and it has grown a lot. So the year before, we had 30, and this last year, we had 43 campers. And we're hoping to keep it growing, so if you have any little ones, make sure you register them. You get a discount as a MFISD employee. And our kids, our high school kids, they run it all, they do everything for us. We're just kind of there to provide guidance. And those little ones look up at our high school kids like they're Broadway stars. So it's a pretty cool experience all the way around. We then went to the International Thespian Festival. It's a five-day theater intensive, thank you guys for allowing us to attend that. MFHS won the Thespia Award for their duet acting, one of three duets in the country selected as a Thespia winner. So getting accolades at Texas Thespian is awesome, but at Nationals, you're up against the best in the nation. And so for us to be selected one of three is pretty awesome. We had 11 students attend, we got to see the best high school shows from across the country. Callie Coker and Elliot Rosbach were the two that were selected for that honor. And then we did our Sweet Treats fundraiser and almost main performance. We kinda shifted from a improv night to more of a show, like a duet scene. And we think that really helped all of our kids, 'cause it allowed them to, all of them, to have like five to eight minutes on stage, really rehearse their own thing for an audience. So there's no substitute for a live performance. And then we went to Texas Thespian Festival, it's a three-day festival. This year, we had 36 Thespians, all students competed. We require them to, because it's not just like a go-to-the-gaylord-and-hang-out. We want them working towards something. So this year, we had 19 national qualifiers, which is the most that we've had in a number of years. I think in '21 or '22, we had 23, so we got pretty close there with a young group. And then Elliot and Callie with a different scene, they were named mainstage performers. They were named mainstage performers, so one of seven groups in the whole festival to be asked to perform at closing ceremonies. This is the highest honor a Thespia competitor can achieve, and I believe this is our sixth selection for mainstage in about that many years. So, about half of the time that we go to a festival, we're selected to perform at mainstage, and that's, getting it once is awesome. Getting it six times in the last few years is pretty, pretty, pretty cool. Nineteen national qualifiers. Evan and Addison, all of these guys are in duet acting. Malin and Elsa, Tyler and Santiago, Nathan and Sophie, Cameron and Uvinal, Evelyn and Daly, and then Ella and Nina in solo musical, Hunter and Jaylee in duet musical, Elin in scenic design, and Anthony was an honor crew member. Our fall show was in the Black Box. It was beautiful, really well-designed. Give a lot of thanks to my partner, Jordan Jones. Yeah, it was a cool experience and a really cool intimate space. If you haven't ever been to a show in the Black Box, you should definitely try it out. And we're actually building a JV show in there right now, and that's gonna happen at the end of May. I don't think I added that to this. And then, Marble Falls High School's one-act play, Moby Dick Rehearsed this year. So, the first thing that I wanna talk about is Elliot Rosbach. So, he is now a four-time best performer. I think that the most best performer, best actor, actress accolades to ever, for a student to ever get is two, as in a career. When I was here at Marble Falls High School, I got it twice, my junior and senior year. And last year, we had two girls get it twice. So, we got it four times last year, but this year, Elliot has gotten it at all four rounds of contests, and so, that's really, really incredible for him to be selected four times. And he did it in one season. We have made it to state five out of the last six years. That means that we're in the top eight, and the state contest is May nineteenth. It's a Monday. I know it's a school board meeting for you guys, but we just got our performance order, and going in the first session is not great. Going first, which we did a couple of years ago, is really not good, because there's been three state champions out of two hundred and fifty-five in the last, like, seven fifty years or something. And so, we're going last, and eighth is a good spot for us to be in. It's not the best spot, but it's definitely not the worst spot, and we're feeling really good going into contest. This is our eighth-straight regional appearance, which means we're in the top twenty-four. But again, we're trending upward, five out of the last six years. We've medaled before this year. We don't know how that's gonna go, but we've medaled two out of the last four trips to the contest. And our ninth-straight playoff appearance, that other ninth playoff appearance was COVID, so we made it to the first round, advanced and moved on. So, now, we are the district champion, by district champion, area champion, region champion, and we'll see about state. I will say that, you know, we've had good success in the past, but we've never had, we've never won every round of contests. And so, for us to be here, we're, we're feeling good about our chances. And I think that's it. Is that under three minutes?
So, I do tell them that they have three to five minutes, but that's really hard to do with these amazing programs and all that they do, and all the activities and the accomplishments. So, thank you, guys, for trying, and thank you, guys, for supporting them.
Very good. Coach, you need a break? Are we push-forward? You're good? Okay. All right, let's see. Item nine B, possible purchase of renewal of Imagine Learning Edgenuity. Ms. Leffler.
Good evening. We are recommending the renewal of Imagine Learning Edgenuity. I have a long paragraph written in here, but really, we've used Edgenuity for over six years. The quote, the price did not increase from previous years. The quote itself is for fifty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. We're asking for an extra three thousand dollars to be built in, in case we have kids move in who need a specialized course. An example of that would be a senior who moves in in January, who's taken one and a half years of French. We don't wanna start them off in another foreign language, so we can purchase a semester course from Edgenuity to do that last semester of French, and they provide a teacher. So, we have that buffer. We only had to use that buffer last year, this past year, for one kid. So, it's just there, just in case. We only use it if we need it. This is first read, and so, we will recommend final approval at the May Board of Trustees meeting. Remember, Edgenuity is what we use to run all of our falls courses, all of our credit recovery at both falls and Marble Falls High School, as well as there are a lot of test preparation courses within there, in order for us to serve students in a variety of ways outside of the school day. Are there any questions?
Questions, comments? Anybody wanna take this one tonight? Motion by Mr. Boshiers. Second by Ms. Tubig. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Possible purchase of renewal of NWEA MAP.
Yes, sir. Marble Falls ISD Administration is recommending the renewal of NWEA MAP growth for the following subjects and grades. So, for reading, kindergarten through English IV. For math, kindergarten through grade eight, with Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II. Science, grade six through eight, and Biology. And science for fifth grade, only if needed, where a teacher would only be teaching fifth grade science or science and social studies. A teacher would not have another comparable teacher incentive allotment area. NWEA MAP will continue to serve as the district's required universal screener, and as the state-approved teacher incentive allotment reliable and valid measure for student growth metrics that we give at the beginning, middle, and end of the year. It would continue to be served in conjunction with CBAs for the seamless assessment process for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. At this time, the purchase would be funded from the instructional materials allotment. However, the legislature is meeting, and so, if circumstances change and the instructional materials allotment cannot be used, then we would use local funds. The total amount of the purchase is not to exceed fifty-five thousand. That is a slight buffer. The quote attached is for fifty thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. I don't expect us to come right up to fifty-five, but if we were to have any fifth-grade science-only teachers, we would need to purchase licenses for their kids. This is first read, and we are gonna recommend final approval at the May Board of Trustees meeting.
Questions, comments? Anybody wanna take this one tonight?
That's what I was gonna say. I just looked at Bill, just to make sure. He, he, you know, he, I was so blessed to go to a conference with Bill last week. He's a mastermind on school finance, and so, if he can't, if something ends up not being allowable, he can switch it around for something else, so...
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the renewal of NWEA MAP out of the instructional materials allotment for an amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand.
Motion by Mr. Payson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Verdel. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Very good.
Yes, sir.
It gets to consider possible approval action for the consent agenda. We've got minutes from March twenty-fourth meeting. We've got recommendation for fentanyl abuse prevention and drug poisoning awareness, staff development waiver for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year, and extension of the depository contract. Anybody have any of those that they want to pull off, or motion? Do the minutes separately? Okay, sure. We can pull minutes separately, and let's do that one first. Anybody like to make a motion for the minutes for March twenty-fourth? Motion by Mr. Boshiers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Verdel. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, one abstention, Mr. Payson. Motion carries. All right, that leaves items A, two, three, and four for a consent agenda. Anybody wanna make a motion for that? Motion by Mr. Boshiers. Second by Mr. Berkman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item ten B, certification of provision of instructional materials, Dr. Fields. Yes?
We talked about the, but I didn't know exactly which selection we were gonna be making for social studies. Just to confirm, we are gonna be staying with the same resources that we already have for social studies. We have quite an investment with those, so we'll just be continuing those, but we wanted to make sure that that's what teachers wanted to do. So, we would like to ask you certify for each subject in the required curriculum, that students have access to instructional materials that cover all of the TEES. By certifying that, and there's a signature page that Ms. Shaver will have for you, that gives us access to the instructional materials allotment, so that we can move forward. So, we have to do that yearly, so that we can access those funds.
Questions, comments, motions on that one?
I'll make a motion that we certify each subject in the required curriculum, that students have access to instructional materials that cover all the TEES.
Motion by Mr. Verdel. Second by Ms. Tubig. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got upcoming meetings and board training opportunities. Wednesday, May fourteenth, is a special call meeting at eight-thirty AM. That one's early. That, then we have the May nineteenth, Monday, regular meeting at six PM. And SLI is June eleventh and fourteen, through the fourteenth. Then, we have a Monday, June sixteenth, special award meeting at five, and then a regular meeting also on Monday, June sixteenth, at normal time. Anything to add to that? Questions?
Just a reminder that the five o'clock special call meeting will be a chance for us to reflect on lessons learned from SLI, and so, that will give us an hour to debrief SLI before we get into the regular agenda.
All right. Anything else, anybody? Okay. That gets us to executive session for discussion of professional personnel under Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four, including the renewal and extension of teachers' contracts, and then consideration and possible action regarding superintendent recommendation to terminate a probationary contract at the end of the contract term of Marble Falls High School classroom teacher.
We're back in an open session at 8:25 PM. Discussion possible approval of action arising from executive session. We've got possible approval of professional personnel, including renewal and extension of teachers' contracts. Uh, let's see, I didn't bring my paper.
Okay.
Will you, or just make a administrative recommendation?
Administrative recommendation that the board, all board members approve personnel list number one as presented in closed session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Verdel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Boshiers. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Administration makes the recommendation to approve, uh, almost all board members to approve personnel list number two, uh, as presented in closed session.
Motion by Ms. Tubig.
Second.
We'll give that one to Mr. Payson. Uh, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention, Mr. Bergman. Motion carries.
Administration recommends almost all board members approve personnel list number three as presented in closed session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Payson. Second by Ms. McCary. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? One abstention, Mr. Verdel. Motion carries.
Administration makes the recommendation, recommendation, all board members can vote, uh, to approve personnel list number four as presented in closed session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Verdel. Second by Ms. Tubig. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Very good. Item thirteen A2 is possible action regarding superintendent's recommendation terminate the probationary contract at the end of the contract term of Marble Falls High School classroom teacher, Mr. Whittle.
Administrative recommendation is that we move that the Board of Trustees terminate the probationary contract of Victoria Ryback at the end of the contract term in the best interests of the district and direct the superintendent to provide notice of this action to the employee in accordance with state law.
Administrative recommendation?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Verdel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Payson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstention, one abstention, Mr. Boshiers. Motion carries. All right. That gets us to, uh, no further action items, so we will just stand adjourned at eight twenty-eight PM.